To order this February 24th. Meeting of the Louisville Metro Waste Management District. Welcome, everybody. I guess first item of business is the approval of the January 27th. Two thousand twenty-one minutes has everybody had an opportunity, I trust, to look at those minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes that any? Members would like to make?
I'll move approval of minutes.
Uh, we have a move to approve the minutes by Mary Rose.
That's second.
Second, Baditra. Is there any additional discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the January 27th minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, uh, January million meeting minutes are approved. Thank you very much.
Uh, Bob?
Yes.
Uh, this is hard. Um, I have a comment on an item from our last meeting that I think needs, um, uh, some commenting. When I asked the question about the necessity for adding to, uh, the, uh, other representative to, uh, the board, not the board, but the, um,
Advisor.
So the advisory, yes, same. Um, Bruce Burrows made a very special comment, I think, about the importance of keeping the gifts of the talents blue available to committee, available to the, the city. And I think that first of all, it was a really wonderful tribute to Bruce Blue. But it, it also was a comment about what everyone else who is boss hearing, uh, is willing to do for our city for the success of our program. I, I think that should be commented on. So I just wanted to make that comment.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I second that comment.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next item, our next item of the business would be the budget report.
Yes, sir. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the, uh, budget report, uh, for this month. Uh, there, there wasn't too much change in, uh, license fees and receipts coming in. We're still at sixty-seven percent. Uh, that's not unexpected because we're not in a quarterly licensing, uh, uh, month. So we didn't expect much to change there. Now, I, I will say that, uh, there's an issue that we have with the, uh, expenditures. And, uh, what you'll notice here is in the equipment and capital outlay, uh, there is, uh, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, uh, in there and a hundred and two thousand that has been spent. Uh, it's really, uh, the issue here is the two hundred and eighty thousand that was approved at the board uh, as an appropriation to metro government was placed in, uh, this cost center to make it available when the recycling grant, uh, purchase takes place. However, uh, there was some confusion and they took the, they charged the dumpsters that has been approved for a hundred and twenty-four thousand under the agreement for the, um, uh, the drop off, the pop-up drop-off, uh, in exchange for the truck and dumpsters. They took those funds out of that account. So that hundred and two thousand, it's not all of the dumpsters yet, but that came to a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So I were aware of the issue, we're working to, to fix the issue. The, the hundred and twenty-eight thousand was supposed to come out of the rollover account. And, um, you know, what it's done is, and it didn't even add up to the total expenditures that in the revised budget of nine hundred and thirty-five thousand at the bottom. So what I will, what I will tell you is that, that we're not at eighty-two percent of expenditures. Uh, it's just the fact that, uh, of the way that they put that in there incorrectly. So we'll get that fixed. And, uh, I don't blame you if you don't want to approve this or, or approve this budget tonight. Um, we'll get it fixed, but I just wanted to give you an update on what you're seeing there.
And when you say they, yeah, I'm assuming the finance department.
That is correct.
Brother, Mr. Chairman, this is Bob Lee. I appreciate, uh, Pete's, uh, information and correction. Uh, I, I would, don't think that we should, we should, um, vote on a budget that is going to be replaced or exchanged. So I would think that we would want to, uh, uh, not vote on this until we get a corrected budget.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Uh, I agree, and I have a question for Pete. Uh, does this mean that they are going to actually take money from one account and put it in another, or is this just accounts that are on paper on this budget? Are they, do they actually have to move money around?
Well, no, I don't think that they have to move money around. The issue that we have, uh, and, and I do that for this budget report so that we can keep the rollover amount separate. It is actually located, uh, in the contractual services, uh, budget line. And, and that is actually where that money for the dumpsters was supposed to come from. So, um,
Budget on this report. I said it's just a paper fix on this report. It's, it's not actually having where money, okay, thank you. That was.
So Pete, I, I have a quick question. I just want to make sure I understand. So it sounds like they just bought the money from the wrong budget line? Is that what you're saying? And they're gonna kind of replace it and put and adjust.
Want me to address that, Pete?
Uh, if you want to, Amy, that would be fine.
Uh, yeah, what happened was the purchase of the dumpster, the money was sitting in a P O last year, but because the purchase didn't complete until this year, finance just let that money go back into the rollover funds from last year. So this year, there wasn't an equipment line item for the dumpsters to come out of. So they just put it in with, it got put in the wrong account. And that's why we're just, we're switching money to a new account, but it's not any, any new money, any old money. It's already there. It just got paid for out of the wrong account.
Hey, hey, house, thank you.
Any other? Go ahead.
Yeah, what I would add is, you know, we, we purchased that, um, front load truck and these dumpsters a long time ago. Uh, and, and we've got, finally got the dumpsters in enough to where we're paying, uh, paying those on those, but we still haven't received the truck. Uh, the delays have been significant due to COVID nineteen. So, you know, whereas we thought that we would have this done in the last year's budget, we're, I'm still not sure when we're gonna get the, the front load dump, uh, truck. So we're probably gonna have this issue at another time if we don't watch and make sure that it comes out of the other account, which, you know, now that we're aware that finance did that, uh, we can, we can keep a better eye on it. But I would expect those expenses to be coming out. And also I would expect that the rollover amount will start to decrease.
Well, Pete, that explains why we see the roll-off on the, on the streets all the time, right? I said, that explains why we see the roll-off trucks on the street all the time because they're still being picked up by roll-off containers instead of front end.
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got an update on the front-end loader. I just talked to our salesperson today. Uh, one of, one of the holdups is getting a paint job done. And so we're seeing, uh, just getting a white truck. That way it helps with production. We don't have to worry about getting it painted. That, that should speed up the process. Right now stands at the beginning of March, the first of March, we should be getting our truck. Uh, but we're trying to speed up the process by not getting it painted, just bringing it white, and we'll put a wrap on it later on to help get the truck in because that's the delay. We can't get delayed because they're not taking the time out to paint an orange truck. It might be able to get it faster if it's just all white.
This probably, this whole issue probably relates back to the same issue that the Ford Planks here in, in the county had to shut down recently because they couldn't keep their supplies of parts up for production. So this is probably something similar that's happening all across the industry.
Now, both these trucks was happened, they got other, they got bigger, uh, you know, that, you know, the other cities getting twenty trucks and they're all white. Well, we just get more and they got painted orange and it keeps getting pushed back. That's why we're just gonna go to all white so we can get one off their assembly line. That's what's happening in this instance.
All right.
Hey Keith, if I may ask, I forgot what, um, what kind of truck, what manufacturer did we, did we go with when we approved this?
Uh, we're going with, uh, uh, best equipment we buy it from, but we get an auto, auto car.
Auto car?
Yes, sir, auto car.
Yeah.
Are there additional questions or comments on the, uh, budget report?
Just one thing on the, on the truck and the dumpsters, uh, Bob.
Yeah.
Regardless of their color, should they reflect that they were financed or purchased by the district? Should there be something painted on there to give credit where credit is due?
That probably would not be a bad idea. Can that be accomplished, Keith?
That's easy, no problem. No, no problem at all. We'll, we'll put that on there, no problem. On the wrap. It'd be a nice looking little wrap. Of course, we'll let y'all see it before it's done. We'll, we'll see what y'all think about it, but that can be done, no problem.
Yeah, I was getting, yeah, thanks. I was getting ready to say, uh, when you get the wording or whatever together, bring it to a board meeting and let the members look at it. Thank you, Peter. It's not, not. Somebody else say something?
No, I apologize. It was me coughing.
Oh, okay. Uh, I guess if there are no other, uh, questions or comments on the budget, we'll move on to, uh, our only action item tonight, the state annual report, uh, and anti-litter.
March first is our deadline for our annual report. And this annual report, uh, for anybody that's new or don't remember, this is, uh, due, uh, to the State Division of Solid Waste Management each year. And it gives them an update on the, uh, activities regarding solid waste management in Jefferson County. This is something that each county has to do. We are unlike any other county and, uh, we struggle to get this done on time, uh, each year. And I've actually talked with the state about, uh, the time. A, a lot of counties have maybe one or two haulers, you know, they, they, they don't have as many working parts as we do or the number of people that have to report. So we did not get this complete, uh, before this board meeting, which we had hoped to do, uh, so that we can get a certification on it, uh, to send it. So, uh, what I'm gonna do tonight is kind of present on what we have, what we still, uh, are remaining and some, uh, some questions. And hopefully we're gonna get this done in the next, uh, week. And at that point, uh, we'll make a decision on how to move forward. Um, what I have outstanding, uh, is, uh, now one landfill report from outside of Kentucky. Um, that generally, what we have to do, we have to report how much weight goes outside of Kentucky. Uh, and they use this in their state report. I, I did receive one of those, uh, right before the meeting, so I'm still just have one that's outstanding. Uh, some recycling data, um, is, uh, still out. Uh, the used motor oil, we still waiting on that. And we're still waiting on information on hazardous materials. And I'll, I'll kind of go into a little bit about, uh, the figures and stuff in another slide. Uh, but, um, one question would be about beneficial use and disposal at Ralph Avenue. Uh, do we, do we count it as beneficial use or disposal? So, uh, we'll get to that in a minute. Plus, uh, we have lagoon silt and soil from a Louisville Metro, from a Louisville water project that's taken place and whether or not that we want to count that as diversion. So another area that we're working on is waste taller data. Uh, there is, uh, either some confusion or, uh, not, uh, it's just not clear because some of the numbers that, that we're getting, uh, are kind of, um, they don't make a whole lot of sense. So I still have some of that stuff to work out. And while we have all of our litter expenses in, we have not processed them all the way through the system. So we're working to get those. And then the question about certification. So I'm gonna kind of go through these, uh, as, um, as we can. And this first slide is the recycling commodities. And what we have is all of these facilities are reporting. Uh, so like aluminum cans, we might have, you know, ten different facilities that are reporting that. So these are, these are numbers that are all brought together and, uh, from all these facilities. So it's not just reflective of one facility. And, uh, what you'll see here is I've highlighted some of them that there's changes that are fairly significant. And when we have these significant changes, we want to go to some of the industry reporters and find out exactly what's caused that. Uh, sometimes it can be that there's a new facility that's opened up and we have material going someplace and we're, we're losing it. That, that's happened often in the past. Uh, or it could be that the, that, uh, there is a new process where there's not as much of that material being generated from the community. Uh, or actually could be that, um, there's been a slowdown in economic activity that has caused this. So I, I kind of anticipate that some of this is gonna be from, uh, slowdowns in the early part of the year with COVID. Uh, and, uh, I'll be talking with some other people about this. So, uh, some of those numbers were down in metals, ferrous metal and non-ferrous metal. Those were fairly significant drops. Um, food waste, we kind of expected because we're not running the CBD program. Uh, the, uh, commercial single stream, it makes sense for that to be down. Um, and sometimes with aluminum cans, you never know if that is, uh, because there's more single stream and those cans are going into that category, the same with tin and steel cans. So when you look at the single stream, residential single stream, uh, which is, uh, right here, you can see that it is slightly up. So it could be that, that, that it's not a drop in material. It's just a drop in how it's counted. So, uh, one of the areas that, um, well, let me say this, this is residential and commercial, uh, recycling. Let me go on to the next one. This is beneficial use and recovery. And, um, the numbers here are also down. Probably the biggest is in the mixed inert, which is concrete, brick and sand. Uh, a lot of this material coming from two thousand and seventeen and two thousand eighteen, these numbers were much higher than they are this year. Uh, that was a huge drop. So the question is, where is it going? And how was it counted? Uh, I have a feeling that part of that is going to the Ralph Avenue site. Uh, and that's what the number down at the bottom is, which is mixed construction and demolition material beneficially used. And that is my question. Uh, are we, would we want to count the material that goes to Ralph Avenue as diversion? Or we count it as disposal? And looking at past practice, I can think of a facility called Mother Earth that was very similar to, uh, what they're doing. It was a beneficial use facility and they were bringing in the exact same materials, filling it. And the facility was, the, the, the numbers were treated as, uh, diversion. Uh, so, um, I don't know if, um, if the board has any, any comment on how we're gonna count that, but it will make a big difference in whether in our diversion number. So, uh, I don't know if anybody has an opinion on that.
Was, uh, Mother Earth, that, correct me if I'm wrong, that's the quarry?
Uh, it is the Louisville Underground.
Yeah, Louisville Underground. Did they have a beneficial reuse permit from the state?
They did.
And what about, uh, the Ralph Avenue? Do they have a beneficial reuse permit?
They have an agreed order. So they consider, they, they consider it beneficial use because it's, 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 uh, it's helping to close down a site that needs to be closed. And, uh, besides, so it, it's, it's not exactly the same, but it's very similar to answer your question.
I think, uh, Pete, one of the, one of the, uh, questions would be, uh, uh, the definition of beneficial reuse. A lot of us may not know what that is. What, how, how would you define that?
So beneficial reuse is when a solid waste is used, uh, to, as a, as a fill material to a project, um, such as, uh, road base or, um, materials that are, are used in a manner that helps build something or fix something. It doesn't go into ultimate disposal, uh, where, you know, it really has no benefit at that point. It's just disposal. So in a sense, you can look at this facility as one that's fixing a community problem. So it does have a beneficial use.
Is, uh, is it usually, uh, the material is filling a void, a, a, a hole or whatever? I, I do not use Ralph Avenue, never been there. Are they actually dumping on top of the ground or are they actually putting it into a void or some kind of, some kind of hole that has been created prior to them being there?
Well, the history of the place is that it was excavated as part, the sand was excavated as part of the interstate or, uh, or the Waterson Expressway. Uh, it was operated for a long time, which created big pits, uh, which, uh, back before nineteen ninety and many of the rules, it was used, uh, to put a lot of stuff in there that were, could be considered hazardous. And, um, so the, the operator was told back in the nineteen nineties, this is the fifth, sixth agreed order to cap the place to, uh, put a cap on it, water infiltration out of the old field, uh, by using something that's inert. And, um, so yes, it does go into a hole, but it's, it's not like a landfill. It's more like we're trying to cap and fix an issue. It's a, it's a, it's tricky. And that's the reason that I'm, I'm asking the question.
Uh, Pete, my question would be, so what's the ultimate goal at Ralph Avenue? What's gonna happen to that piece of property?
Well, eventually it's gonna be kept and it's gonna be, um, the problem for Louisville Metro and the community surrounding is gonna go away. Uh, or not go away, but it's gonna be controlled because there's not that water that's passing through. It has no liner. Uh, and that's part of the issue.
Build something there or to use it for some purpose?
Um, I, I do think that there's, you know, they, I, I really can't say, but typically there's very limited things that you can do on fill. Uh, you just don't have a, uh, you can't put buildings on it, uh, because it, you don't have a good foundation.
So what it is, is that it's making it safe for, for being around it.
That is correct.
That sounds to me like a beneficial use. So I would go with the beneficial use. But you're, you're asking what our opinions are, then. That's not beneficial use.
Uh, Pete, let me ask you, when we went through this discussion years ago with the underground, we counted that as beneficial reuse, correct?
That is my understanding. It was probably about the time that I came, uh, to metro that that, that was, uh, starting to end. I'm not sure that I, I, I don't remember, but I am ninety-five percent sure that it was counted as beneficial use.
Maybe Bob, maybe Bob or Bruce can comment on this. Didn't we count that as beneficial reuse, but didn't we put an asterisk on it or something?
Yes, that, that's exactly how I remember it. It was considered beneficial reuse and, um, there was always an explanation next to it, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's the same as, as I did. Uh, if you use it one time, we were counting it as reuse.
I would agree with Bob, Lee and Bruce. It was always qualified as beneficial reuse. And everybody's allowed their opinion, but, um, I was running a landfill at the time, so I may have disagreed.
Well, on this, on the, uh, screen, what you'll see is if you count that one hundred and four thousand, uh, probably in that same general category of mixed inert, concrete, brick and sand. Uh, it's very similar. You're probably gonna make that number come up to about what we do annually in that category. So I would think that it would belong there. Uh, and I think that that would, uh, take care of that big drop of material. So anytime you're counting, trying to count diversion, it's just like, uh, you know, it's a shell game, trying to figure out where all this waste is going, you know, and, and sometimes it'll move to this place, to this place, and you just have to figure it out. I think that's where it belongs in the beneficial use. So, um.
If it, if by counting it as beneficial reuse, does it create an artificial bump in our annual report for beneficial or diversion?
Let me, uh, I do have it calculated right now as beneficial use. And if you look at this next slide, all sectors, um, it puts us right dead on pretty much where we were um, at fifty point one percent, uh, versus fifty percent last year. So I, I don't think it's gonna create an artificial bump, uh, uh, that we would have a hard time explaining. So, you know, I don't, I don't think it's gonna hurt us as far as a, of a bump. And in honesty, that is why most of the time we're calculating things on a four-year rolling average. So we don't have big hiccups, uh, like in the, um, metals part of things, when you get, the prices go up, the metal starts to come in. Uh, and you can get an artificial, not an artificial bump, it's a real bump, uh, in the case of metal. But it will make your diversion rate appear to jump one year and then down the next year when the prices have, have fallen back out. So, uh, yeah, I don't know if I answered that question, Bob, but I, I don't think that it really impacts us, uh, one way or another.
Pete, copper, copper is now over four dollars a pound. So it's the highest, it's the second highest it's ever been. So the non-ferrous prices are going up, but didn't one year, was it when they built the, the bridge or something? We had a really high, uh, construction and debris, um, amount that messed it up for where air.
There, there was a really big bump one year. I don't know if it was for that. Uh, but, you know, a lot of the stuff that went to the bridges project never really went to a weight, uh, to be weighed at a facility. A lot of that was concrete that was processed on site of deconstruction and taken directly to the bridge instead of being weighed, uh, which makes sense. It doesn't make any sense to, to haul something just to weigh it. So I'm not sure, Bruce. Uh, I, I really can't answer that question. It, it could be.
Well, I think you guys are being, at least being upfront about it. And if, and it's not causing, uh, a bump that we're, that we're, uh, obtaining a lot of credit uh, for our diversion.
Right. Bob, I've got, I've got just one more question. I, I have seen pictures of people going into Ralph Avenue and it looked to me like everything was on top of the, on top of the ground instead of in a, in a, a sunken area. Is, is that, is that what we're talking about? Is actually, actually elevating the area? Is actually, actually elevating the area?
That, there is a, there was a plan that was made and they had to bring it up to certain contours for the, the storm water issues in that area. MSD was very particular about the, the height that they wanted. And, you know, how much can be put in there? There is pits there and they originally started as pits. So I'm not sure if I'm answering your question, but originally there was pits and yes, they are getting some elevation above, above the normal ground level that are there, that was there.
So it's both ways is kind of what we're saying.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, it, the pit was even, at one point it was so deep that it was into the groundwater. And they had disposed of fly ash that actually hit that groundwater. And as part of this agreed order, to allow them to do this, they had to pull as much of that fly ash out of that groundwater as they could because it's, it, it's a pretty serious contaminant with heavy metals.
So we're pretty much saying that the agreed order is somewhat like our beneficial reuse permit, basically?
I would think so.
Okay.
That agreed order, correct me if I'm wrong, that's, that's between the state and Ralph Avenue, correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct. And I do want to discuss Ralph Avenue a little bit when we get done with the annual report. So if anybody's, everybody's kind of ready to, to move on unless there's other questions.
Let me ask the board members if there's any objections to, to reflecting it this way in the annual report.
Well, this is a hard vote for me, but I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it. It's, it's been, it's been a rub for anybody that has, you know, any kind of permanent landfill space in the area. But I, I, the, the, the conversation in regards to that there's a certain elevation that it has to get up to and it helps MSD and so forth. I think kind of, kind of satisfied my, my approach in regards to that it could be used as beneficial reuse.
I, I did have one question, Pete, coming off of what Bob said with the elevations. I'm, I'm assuming that any elevation change they have to make there vis a vis MSD and drainage and all of that. It's, this is all under cap eventually, right?
Yes. And that was part of the plan was to make sure that they were sending that water to the right place. So because that, that, that one basin that was so deep that it was into the groundwater, it was catching a lot of water. So they, they was going to have to be able to direct that water someplace. Otherwise it was going to cause issues in the area.
Okay. You want to move on then? Thank you, everybody.
Well, when I look at the, sorry, the yearly and the annual recycling and diversion rate, I want to point you to the residential and commercial recycling tons and rate. What you'll notice is that over the past four years, we've lost a significant amount of material, not material, but a significant amount of rate. Some of that is not necessarily due to less recycling, some of it is. But some of it is also a reflection of less disposal. And again, that could be Ralph Avenue is robbing disposal, what would typically be going to disposal. So when you look at the overall percentage, there's, there's much less actual waste that's being generated in Louisville. And I would think that a lot of that had to do with that pretty big significant slowdown in the early part of the year with, with COVID. So, you know, whenever you're trying to figure something out about why waste is up or waste is down, it's either going someplace where you're not tracking it or it's a real slowdown in, in economy. So I tend to think that this is a slowdown in economy due to COVID. We'll see next year.
Yeah.
But it, but it has, you know, that's one of the reasons why we have a rolling four-year average. So it, it's still going down in our four-year average. We're at 26.2, where we was at 27.1. So we'll see if that comes back up, but, but it's a little bit troubling that that number has slipped for the last couple of years. So that's just something for us to keep an eye on when we look at those commodities. In the hauler, the curbside part of things, what I will say is that having a little bit of under, difficult time to understand some of the data, there's been some really big swings, which would typically be during the a year like COVID and the switch from dumpsters at schools and businesses and restaurants to the, to the curb at home. Some of that swing is actually went into the wrong direction that I would have anticipated. So I, I just, I've, I've been trying to work with people to understand what's going on here. So what I would say here is that it, it's fine. But, you know, I think that we need to look and make sure that the way that we're calculating these things is what we, what we really truly need. And in this one, you know, what I would say is that there was, when you look at like hauler number four, they went from a much higher percentage of almost 10% recycling rate to 2%. That, that doesn't make sense. So I, I just don't have an answer for something like that. But overall, we may have dropped at the curbside slightly, but we're still doing okay. National average on this is much higher than what we're getting. Variable rate pricing, slight increase this year are 20 versus 19. We're up, what is that? About a dollar 20 something overall. So, you know, the, the, the price of recycling. Now, keep in mind that these rates are, number one, they're reported by the individual licensed haulers as their average rates. And it, it, it's really, the, the rate is for a household, per household, per month. And it takes into account contract, contracted services and unincorporated services. And when you, when you look at this, you can see that, that hauler number four, hauler number one and hauler number five are really doing a whole lot of contracts. Whereas hauler number two is doing more of the unincorporated area and more of a unorganized collection system. So that, that drives that price up significantly. Plus, the, the cost that they're putting on recycling, I think, is, is an attempt to not collect so much recycling. I don't think that that's what their core business wants to be. So does anybody have any questions about the, the touches or the variable service rate for the private industry?
Pete, I do. I, I think that we, we can't go past this, pass this chart without understanding it better. I think that possibly your subcommittee should look into the whole issue in regards to residential recycling and variable rates. One of the, one of the other problems that you haven't talked about is these numbers, these individual monthly numbers also includes considerations like one and two times a week service, right? So there's plenty, you know, there's numerous, there's numerous contracts that has twice a week service instead of once a week service, which would surely mean that it would be costly. And then others would, like an example of rear low, I mean rear door, where you have to go behind the door. That would be more expensive. These are all choices that people have, that municipalities have, that they want to keep, have the choice in order to be able to satisfy their constituents. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of different things in here, other than just simply people wanting to reflect different prices in recycling. And I think that everybody has to understand that, you know, there's a lot of contracts in which there's limited, limited trash that people pick up also. So if you're picking up less trash, it would be actually a, a, a price that would be less on a per month basis. So there's, there's numerous variables here in this particular piece of the schedule that you have to consider when you're looking at it.
I, I would agree with you, Bob. I think that there are so many different variables in this that, you know, you do have to take these things with a grain of salt. Generally, I think what we need to do is get a little bit better understanding of the issue. A lot of these numbers are, are generated because we have to make these reports to the state. But the state doesn't necessarily reflect Jefferson County and many other reports. So I don't disagree that it might be a good idea to take a look at the issue so that we can kind of get a better handle on it. Maybe we're, maybe we need to ask more questions so that we can better understand it.
And, and possibly Pete, in regards to the schedule, so that somebody that isn't familiar with, with the trash industry doesn't understand, you know, at least put some asterisks or whatever in here in regards to what I just addressed in regards to different variables that each, each company may, may be using in order to make their, make their, their contractual arrangements with municipalities and the customer. Because if you just look at it blankly like this, it, it isn't a real reflection of the, the service matching the price.
Is, is this particular variable rate pricing, is this something that's requested by the state? Or is this something we report on because it's a little bit more specific to Jefferson County?
Well, I, I do want to go back. So the, the numbers here, the number of households and the weights and stuff is required on the, the annual report. The variable rate pricing is actually in, in metro ordinance. So this, it's been in metro ordinance for quite some time that this is a requirement for people to report. So for us to not do that, we would have to change ordinance.
No, I understand that's in the, I understand the difference between that, you know, that it's in the ordinance, but variable rate pricing is not something the state asks of every county.
That is correct.
Okay. Then I, I, I agree with Bob. Then there needs to be, this needs to be as extensively footnoted as you can without getting too verbose about it.
Okay. So is, is the suggestion that we have the advisory committee take a deeper dive into this?
I would vote for that. Yes. I think them and, and, and along with the subcommittee, the residential subcommittee or whichever one it's called, should really look at this thing and, and figure it out better.
Understood.
Yeah, what you all might do is as staff, you might try to come up with your footnoted explanation and then run that by the advisory committee to see if they think your all's assumptions are, are valid.
Sure. And I would welcome any input into that as far as variables that we should be looking for from members of the board or the committee.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
May I ask, hauler number six is not, they do not have a price for recycling or yard waste. Isn't that a requirement to be a hauler that they offer three, all three services within the county?
It is. This is a, a new hauler with just a few customers at this point. We, when we was, we've been in a rush to put this together. And we noticed on the, their, their annual report that, that there were no figures there. So we will be getting with that company to make sure that they understand. And, and honestly, Bruce, it brings up something that's been on my mind for quite some time. And that is having an effort to make sure that all haulers understand their responsibilities under ordinance and maybe do a little bit of, of updating because people change from year to year who's completing this report. And I think that it would be beneficial for the consistency of our report to make sure that we have something a little bit more substantial for them to, to go by so that they understand what we're even looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, any other questions or comments from the board? Before Pete moves on? Go ahead, Pete.
Oops. The next category is curbside services, participation and availability rates. What we have to do here is we take census data, the number of household, occupied households versus the number of households reported haulers as being serviced. And then we come up with a percentage that, of people that have service. So of the 304,000, I think occupied households in Jefferson County, right now, 98.6 of them have garbage service. 39.8% have recycling, 36.9 have yard waste services. It sounds like a great number, but we do have a mandatory ordinance that you have to have garbage service in, in our community. And while 98.6% sounds good, as compared to 300 and something thousand households, that's quite a few households that don't have service. And these are ones that we get calls for from citizens and metro council people as garbage piling up. Or we get this from illegal dumping. So 98.6% is good, but that still means that we have a problem with people not having services and what are they doing with their trash? Any questions on the, on this number? I, I think that once the new census data comes out, this will help us. I always question the, the data when you don't have a good census. It's been 10 years since we've had a real true update of the number of households. And I think things are changing quite quickly in Louisville Metro as far as the households and where people are located. So if anybody has any, don't have, doesn't have any more questions.
Yeah, that's, that's somewhere around 4,000 theoretically, or somewhere around 4,000 households not getting their garbage collected. Theoretically.
Right.
I guess some of that could be reflected by people changing haulers. You, you know, and stuff getting lost in, in the process of them changing haulers, maybe. People moving in, I don't know.
What, what I would say is that there, there's, there's some of that, but there's also a fair amount of people that don't have these services. But I'm going to say that it's mostly located in unincorporated areas where people subscribe, where you have contracts, it's taken care of in the contract and everybody has services. So most of our complaints are, are actually in the southwest and south part of Louisville, which indicates it is mostly unincorporated area that, that people are not having services. When we go, we, you know, we call the hauler and find out if they've had service. Lots of times is they didn't pay their, their bill. So they've gotten cut off.
And I guess, I guess we'll never get a handle, a true handle on the number of people who take their waste and put it in the Walmart dumpster or the Target dumpster or the dumpster behind the bank or stuff like that.
Well, we do get a count of them fairly, fairly often when we catch them illegal dumping. So.
Yeah, yeah.
That's more, one less. So, and it takes place quite a bit. Education, this is a, a full report of the things that we're doing. I think you guys have seen many of these things. What, you know, some of the things that you probably haven't seen, and I'll be honest with you, I don't know what it is, but the KETs by my neighbor day. Karen, are you here? Can you, do you want to look at these items with the, with the board?
Sure. So part of the annual report is just kind of listing some of the programs and events that we took part in or programs we initiated over the year. So of course the pop-up drop-offs are there, our webinar series that we started. I continually do the No Waste Wednesday trivia. Um, I continually do the No Waste Wednesday trivia. We did the compost bin and rain barrel sale. Um, and then K E Ts Be My Neighbor Day was something that we, it was kind of a big event in 2019, um, where kids got to see different, um, community first, basically. And so, um, you know, it was much more fun in, uh, in 2019 when kids got to get inside a garbage truck. But, um, in, uh, 2020, it was just a drive-through event, uh, but it was still a big, uh, participation. So, um, so I still reported it, of course. And then we initiated the recycle right program, uh, which is being piloted in three small areas. We only did one of those pilot areas in 2020, but we're continuing with, um, the other two this year. Uh, and the waste tire collection event were required by the state to do certain educational and promotional materials for that. So I posted those in it. Um, and then any of our news articles that come up over the course of the year, we try to keep track and, and list those. So Christmas tree disposal is always a big thing. Uh, we did a recycling, or I contributed to, um, I think it was Ryan Vanveldser that did an article for WFPL about recycling plastic bags. And then we were featured, um, around Thanksgiving about cooking oil recycling. Um, and then of course we always have to add in our flyer, which didn't really change this year, but, um, we included it. And then we put a lot more, uh, videos up this year, especially because things had to be virtual. So, um, those were all in.
So most of this material is actually found in an appendices. Uh, while this is the list, it's not just a list that's in the report. So when you do, if you want to see a lot of this material, you can find it in the, in the appendices. Any questions on the education side of things? Litter grant expenses, and this is one that we'd hope to get finalized by tonight, uh, because this is one that's very important for us to get a certification on. Um, the numbers we think are accurate, although I, I do believe that we'll be adding some expenses to it. Uh, you know, we get, uh, last year we got 380,000 and right now we're showing $475,000 in expenses. And I, I promise you that it's, it's really much more than that. Uh, but, um, last year we cleaned over 4,424 miles of roadway. Only 852 miles was actually hand picking up litter. The rest of it was, well, I can't say, the street sweeping adds a lot of miles. Uh, but you can't count all of it. You can only count 25% of, of the tonnage. Um, and cost because you're picking up a lot of grit with, along with litter. Uh, the expressway cleanings, two of those, uh, 212 miles. Uh, Brightside's not listed in here because we still hadn't gotten their numbers. Uh, and that is part of an MOA with Brightside and we should be getting, we, we did receive them just too late for this report. So, uh, we'll be getting back with you guys on this one, uh, as far as, uh, a signature. I think we're, we're, we've spent well over the amount that they allotted last year. So I'm not too worried about it. We just want to make it as accurate as we could. So are there any questions about the litter grant expenses? Okay. Enforcement, you guys have heard some of this, um, our enforcement unit, this is only solid waste enforcement. It does not include codes and regs. Uh, we have three officers for the entire county. Uh, we opened up 6,000, over 6,000 cases and almost 2,500 of them were for illegal dumping. We also did 1,300, uh, reported litter. And report a litter is when citizens can call and report when somebody's thrown stuff out their window of their car. Uh, they give us information. What we do is we send them a letter, uh, with a little litter bag saying, hey, don't do that again. You can get fined. Uh, unfortunately, it seems like there's some that don't pay attention to it because I know that there's about, uh, there's some people that have had five or six letters sent to them. They, they just continue to litter. Uh, warning letters, uh, 1,500 citations, 439, and we had 11 court actions and we won them all. Uh, I did not put impounds on there, but I think that, uh, the number of impounds we had last year was, was fairly far down because our camera program was kind of, um, hobbled a little bit with equipment, uh, but we did, I think nine impounds of vehicles last year. So that would conclude everything about the annual report. Uh, we can do, we can call the, the board back to do a full certification of this, uh, but I've given you pretty good, uh, report on what this thing is going to be. I think it's, it's a matter of finalizing the litter grant expenses. Uh, and at that point, uh, if the, if the board is so inclined to allow, uh, Bob to sign that based upon what you heard tonight, it would help us to be able to get the report to them without having to get the full board back together. Uh, but if there's concerns about that, I would say, uh, we can bring the full committee, the, excuse me, the full board back to, to do the formal, uh, certification of the annual report.
What's the, uh, feeling of board members on this?
Pete, would you go with, is it just two items that you think are open? Is that what you just said? Um, well, I can go back to the items that were open. Well, there's just a, a few small items, the, the landfill thing, then there was some questions uh, and some of the recycling data. I think we answered some of those. Uh, the used oil and hazardous materials, that's just people reporting. It's not going to impact our diversion numbers because the numbers are so small.
Yeah.
Uh, and I think that we, I think we're settled on the waste taller data. If you, uh, we just realized that we need to look forward in the future so that we can, we can work on those numbers. Uh, litter expenses, getting those verified. Yeah. So it's not that many items that we have outstanding.
Yeah. The big one was the beneficial reuse, which we agreed to. So.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
That's right.
I personally speak, I think, uh, I'm, I'm good going forward. I just guess long as we could get updates, which we get anyway, I would be, I would be fine looking forward.
Do you need a motion on this, Bob?
I think that would probably be appropriate. Um, it just puts the, uh, it puts the board on record, uh, as, as being okay with them going ahead and submitting this report without, uh, uh, an actual, uh, final action.
Uh, I will make that motion with, uh, with Bob that you, uh, reviewed and signed it appropriately when you feel comfortable with it.
All right. Thank you, Bob. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Uh, uh, who was that?
Mary Rose.
Mary Rose. Okay. Didn't recognize your voice there. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Uh, is there any additional discussion? All those in favor of staff being allowed to submit this report once they have all of the, uh, data that they're still trying to collect in without bringing the board back for a special session, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Eyes have it. Uh, you have your marching orders, Pete.
Thank you guys so much.
Um, I have one. Well, go ahead. Uh, well, uh, Peter, are you still there?
I am.
Uh, this is a, uh, question, um, related to Robert's rules and, and the public, uh, notice of this meeting. Uh, Pete has, as of today, has come into some additional information on Ralph Avenue. And, uh, can he make a report on that without that being on the agenda item for tonight's meeting? Or do we need to postpone that?
I think that he can report on it. You just wouldn't be able to take any action on it.
Yeah, I don't think any actions anticipated, but he, he has some additional, uh, information on that. Or, or have you possibly covered that in just the discussion week?
I have not.
Okay.
I do have. Sorry, Bob. We, we do have a couple more items on the agenda. I think that it's, it's appropriate to break now to, to discuss what's going on. Uh, if you would want to do so.
Well, we can do it, I guess, anywhere, uh, anywhere on the agenda, but I just wanted to get Peter's opinion of that before we, uh, I don't know if you'd call that old business, new business, um, certainly not an action item. Uh, well, let's go into, let's just move on to the next item of business, which is old business and uh, Ralph Avenue and the problems you've been having out there, the state's been having out there with enforcement has been on our agenda before. So we can consider that, uh, the report you have as part of old business.
Okay. So, uh, our next item is the anti-litter campaign. And if you guys recall, we discussed this at our last, um, board meeting as we would be making a potential ask. So what we've done is we, we basically went back and put together what we would consider specifications, uh, in what we would be asking a vendor to supply to us. And, um, I know I got this to you guys late, uh, so you probably didn't have time to review it. Uh, but, uh, basically what we're looking for is a message campaign, uh, to reduce litter behaviors in a target audience. And the concept would be that we would have, they would create a, a litter slogan and logo. And then a, a message, uh, kind of an emotional or fact-based, uh, message about littering. And you see the, the items there. Uh, it would be very limited and, and targeted as to what we want here. So we, we're getting our first taste of doing this before we would go for a longer term contract. Uh, we gave them some information with, uh, can keep America beautiful. The target audience that we want to get to is going to be that 16 to 30 year old range, uh, age group, uh, because those are the heaviest, uh, litterers according to statistics. So we, we want to target that. We want this first, uh, to, to, to target that, uh, that audience and demographic. And we want them to do this, uh, or give us a proposal. Uh, a lot on streaming and display and video ads, uh, to see what they're going to come up with. And with the potential for print ads, uh, for billboards and waste trucks and that, bus shelters, et cetera. We want to make sure that we're going to get analytics. So the next time that we do it, uh, we have a pretty good idea of what worked and didn't work. Uh, and then we would have some potential future campaigns if this works well. So I guess the ask, uh, to the board, uh, and, and I know that this has come on you guys fairly quick, uh, is, is this okay for us to spend up to, say, $25,000 uh, to give this first pass at, or attempt at a litter, anti-litter campaign? Uh, and, uh, to see what those results are, to come back to you without a commitment, to come back and see what the bidders would suggest. And that you, we don't necessarily have to go out to RFP, but, but we can get them to give us, um, uh, I, I guess a quote and, and what, uh, what they propose and come back to the board again. Uh, but, but we kind of want to have a, a figure, uh, in our mind. Uh, so if the board is willing to, uh, fund up to $25,000 for development and implementation of one phase of an anti-litter campaign, uh, we would really, uh, we would appreciate it. And, but with a look towards litter education in the coming years, because we truly need it.
When you say, uh, the $25,000 figure, Pete, you're, are you, are you referencing that would be used in the bid? To say that this, that this program will pay up to $25,000 for a, a first phase of program and then, and they, they make their bids of what they can do based on that 25,000?
I don't think it would be something that we would want to put, uh, the figure that we're looking at in there, but, uh, we can kind of, um, if they're talking about something really extravagant, uh, we can kind of bring them back to reality with, well, we're, we're not looking to spend that much money. But it's always good to know kind of where your, you know, potential is, uh, when you're, when you're discussing this, uh, in the future. When they're trying to decide on how to, to create something. I don't know if that made any sense, but I, I just don't think it's a good idea to tell people what you want to spend.
Yeah, I can understand that for sure. Um, so what you're saying basically is you're asking us to approve you all spending $25,000 for a first shot at an anti-litter program to see how it goes. To see how you, what you target and, and try to get some kind of analytics of how that program actually succeeded or didn't succeed in the target audience. Then to give you an idea of where we might want to go in the future.
Yes, sir.
Is that a fair summation? Am I getting that right?
Yes. Uh, Karen, uh, would you agree that that's what we're looking for? Karen's been, uh, instrumental in this as well.
Yes, I do agree. That was a good summary.
Pete, I, I have a question. Um, considering the target market, are, are, are we going out after an agency or a group to do this? And if we are, is it going to be a younger group? The demographic would have been such a young demographic, 16 up to 33. So we have some entities, some agencies or groups in mind to do this, or is this going to be something done in-house?
Uh, it wouldn't be done in-house. I don't think that we have the, the ability to do what we're looking to do. Uh, the, uh, the, the two people that we've kind of talked to, two companies that we've kind of talked to, I can tell you they're, they're younger, uh, but they also understand, I believe, the, how to hit demographics and how to hit, hit the message where we needed to hit. Um, and that's, that's part of that is through the analytics. And, um, being able to track the views, uh, mostly on like a social media or even like a Hulu TV. Uh, I don't know if you guys, uh, know, but when you watch Hulu now, you can't keep from watching the commercials. You can't skip through them. So that is, uh, you know, you've got a little bit of a captive audience. And if, if you're looking at what that demographic watches and you're hitting this message on those programs that they're watching, then you start to be able to really hone in your message and make sure that that target is getting hit.
So, so you, you already have some agencies in mind. Uh, so I guess I'm, a part of my question is, are you going to put this out for bid or not put this out for bid? Or have you guys already talked to some folks or?
I, I think what we're going to do is put it out there as anybody can give us a quote on it. We've done a little bit of, uh, early research as to even what we're, what this would entail. Uh, we had to do a little bit of homework so that we can, we can get an idea of, of what it entails to even start. So we, we've talked with a couple. Uh, but, uh, it would be open to anybody to make the, a, a bid on this. Not a bid, but put a quote. And the $25,000 mark is, is low enough that we don't have to do an RFP uh, on it. We can, we can put this out, uh, for quotes.
So you're requesting proposals? Uh, I mean, you said you're not going to say 25,000, but it's now public record that it's 25,000. So any company that doesn't know that is not doing their homework at all, that we're not looking at our minutes. Uh, so. I mean.
Good.
So basically, what I wanted to find out is what people are, are, think they can do for $25,000. It sound, I mean, that's what it sounds to me.
Yes.
This than I do, but.
I think it's important to note also that when you do a media buy nowadays with the streaming services and even just Facebook ads and stuff, um, it's kind of like you can put as much money toward it as you want. So even if they knew how much money we had to put toward it, they would tell us how much, how many clicks buys or how many views that would buy.
So, so I'm familiar with, you know, the marketing side of it. Uh, I guess to my concern, and it's not really the dollars is probably, uh, and there's, and the analytics now, a lot of the young people, because they all keep up with their own likes and they're, they're familiar with the analytics side. I would be concerned about with the target market that we have an agency that could have an authentic message. Because it could be $25,000 wasted or $25,000 well spent. And just being able to keep up with it doesn't necessarily speak to us being able to have, since we're looking at trying to get a feel for the messaging. We, we, I, I, my, my, my. We we, I I my my first pass would be, I would want to see the how, what type of impact or move we would have. Did it touch the market at all? Was it member who? Was it the penetration, those type of things? Because keeping the analytics on a campaign that doesn't do anything should be real easy. It'd be, it'd be next to nothing. So so I mean, that was really just my, 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 my passing thought is just. You know, that's a, that's a tough market because of the, um, the, uh, amount of people who are trying to attract. And so my thinking would be like wanting to feel like we had a group that could speak to that market, you know, fairly well.
I I think that, to me, that sounds like a very, very good point, Carl. Um, because there's, you you're, you're going to want to try to figure out somehow that these people do have the capability. Of going after the people that we're interested in. And, um, and I I don't claim to know how to figure that out if if Karen, uh, has any, uh, ideas or comments on that.
I would think they could share some past experience.
Yeah.
With similar targeted, the similar target audience.
Yeah, that's, that's, you know, part of my background. And I just know it's one of the most common things in the world is, uh, having groups who don't, that do not have an authentic message. Now, anybody can put together a campaign and they sound good to us, but I'm not sixteen, so, or thirty three, so. Um, being able to speak to that crowd, it is going to be a little bit different, um, and and I and I keep up with them and it's still, it'll still be tough. Um, so so that would be the thing, just to have a a message that would or a group that we like. That, um, could could speak to that crowd and, uh, like I say, what what I think, don't want me, you know, hill of beings to a fifteen to thirty three.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
I think that also goes to show how important it is for us to get professionals to do this. I can, I can do some design work, but nothing that I know, you know, I don't know anything about that, so.
Uh, what is your, what is your strategy from here? Uh, if the board approves. A twenty five thousand dollar figure this evening, um, are you all going to continue, obviously, to look into? Are you going to come back to the board with? Uh, choices, uh, of companies? Are you going to try to narrow it down to a company and then come back to the board? Or are you asking for permission just to pick somebody and run?
I would envision that we kind of work, uh, to get some ideas and come back to the board, um, maybe with. You know, maybe it, maybe it's a slam dunk, but maybe it's a much more difficult decision. So I think it would be prudent for us to come back to the board with. Uh, anything before we fully pull the trigger on anything that we would do.
Mr. Chairman, this is Bob. I I'm having the, I'm having trouble with paying for basically a proposal, uh. Been in business for forty years and I can probably count on two fingers how many times that I've gotten paid for actually submitting a proposal before, uh. Before the job, uh, I I would like to get a little bit more information here in regards to what. What we're paying for at this point, as. Mary said, or Carl, whoever it was, you know, it's it's on record that we are. Are prepared, I want to say prepared, to pay twenty five thousand dollars, but I sure would like to know more about. Who we would be looking at and who we would be willing to pay twenty five thousand dollars with before I actually commit to it.
Now, let me. Uh, and maybe I misunderstood you, Bob. We're not, we're not going to pay these people just to submit a proposal, Pete. We, we would be paying them for actually performing the work and doing a a campaign, correct?
Yes, yes, sir. We're, we're not proposing to pay anybody before they do any work. We're, maybe, um, i- it was a mistake on our part to ask for a certain, uh, uh, amount of funds. Uh, I I think it was more of an attempt to get a, a, um. Somewhat of an idea of what the board's pleasure would be, uh, when we go to do this. And, you know, we we do intend to come back to the board with any kind of proposal. Uh, we just want to make sure that we're not bringing back a four hundred thousand dollar proposal, uh, that is unrealistic.
And and let me say, Bob, I I may have misunderstood what you were saying too, and if I did, I apologize.
No, I think you, I think you were right on. I just have a problem with spending twenty five thousand or committing. I think we're committing to twenty five thousand dollars. And it sounds like it could very well be a slippery slope. We don't even know how much money that we would. That we would be counting on in order to make the the campaign successful. I mean, uh, you know, I just spent twenty five thousand dollars. I'd like to know if in the future we're going to spend a million bucks, uh, I just think we need to know more about what we're getting into.
Actually, I I I have one proposal. Actually, it may not be such a bad idea, even though it's been. Because when, so when I've had to compete for contracts like this and the price is set, now you're making me compete on my talent. And so you're going to get some of the best creatives because everybody's competing with the same bar. And so if they know where the bar is set, now to break the best proposal, so you'll get a better, um, quality creative proposal. When the bar is set versus if I don't know what the money is and I can go off and like say, four hundred thousand dollars proposal. Where might as well be great if you have four hundred thousand, but it won't sound so great if 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 it's twenty five thousand. And and now you're comparing apples to oranges. But if you use the bias, well, we have X amount and we have these of the criteria we want to reach. Now everyone who's interested in competing, you know, have to compete on, uh, their creativity and their knowledge of the industry and how to utilize. The tools that are available for the, on the analytics and and what platforms it is. So it's, and by that necessarily be such a bad thing to, because now you you have your budget in line and now you're going to really see who's really talented. Because they're all going to have the same, the same level of, the same bar to to utilize to come up with a creative proposal. And if you have a lot of people propose, you'll really get a good feel for what is it going to take. You'll learn a lot about the proposals in terms of how to reach that crowd.
And and I guess it wouldn't hurt if these people realize that if they can produce for the twenty five thousand. They might stand a good chance of getting more in the future. And if they don't produce, then nothing's going to happen with them anyway.
Exactly.
Are other comments from other board members? Thank you. Thank you, Carl. You've, you've, you've had a lot of good insights into this.
Uh, so if I understand correctly, then what we are proposing is that the board give a. Give a sense of the board saying, yes, education is important and we would like to go ahead and get some, uh, proposals. And bring us a recommendation for a campaign that has about twenty five thousand dollars. It's that.
Lot of background. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure where that background noise is coming from. It was a little hard to understand what you were saying, Mary Rose.
Well, I I'll say it again, uh, hopefully that person can get on mute, uh. I said, with the way I understand this is that the staff is asking for a sense of the board to say, yes, education is important. We've always talked about this as part of our campaign. And we would like, uh, them to bring us, uh, proposals or a recommendation for a company. To do about twenty five thousand dollars worth of work, to do an education campaign for the sixteen to thirty year old anti litter, uh, population.
That's, I think that's a good statement of what I understand it to be, uh, Pete?
Sounds good to me.
Well, I'll make that motion, that we give that sense of the board, uh, a positive sense of the board about that to the staff.
All second.
Uh, we have a, uh, motion by Mary Rose and a second by Susan. Is that correct?
That's okay, yes.
Um. Did I get that wrong? Was it you, Susan?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Uh, now, uh, one thing I think it's important to make sure all the board members realize that we are. By this action, we would be, in effect, appropriating twenty five thousand dollars. Just, I want to make sure everybody understands that. Okay, uh, so we have a motion and a second. Is there additional discussion, uh, questions, comments?
I'll, I'll make one, one, uh, comment that, uh, determining my vote, I I. Truly believe that education is a major part of what we're trying to do. And a vote in regards to, uh, the way this, this is coming down, I just don't agree with, so. I'll wait till you put the vote out.
Well, this is, we might as well get into the discussion. What, what, what's your concerns, Bob?
Oh, I think, I think, I think you can get, you can grant this grand proposals without, without putting out a twenty five thousand dollar check and and, uh. Determine what's going on. I mean, I'm just putting a cart before the horse here. I think that, uh, you know, there's been, apparently, there's been discussion with some, some consultants in regards to this. I think we know probably what we're getting into. Uh, it's just that, uh, we don't know as board members what we're really getting into. It 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 would be. It would be advantageous to me to know more about what's happening instead of, uh, just putting out twenty five thousand dollars to determine what. What we're going to be looking at that could cost the district a substantial amount of money.
Well, my, my proposal, my, my motion was not to put out twenty five thousand dollars, just putting it out there. My motion was to say that the sense of the board is that we are willing to spend up to twenty five thousand dollars. But we're not, we're not authorizing this expenditure until we see what the proposals are and and who the consultant is and we understand what's going on here. Uh, it's, it's not really an appropriation just to put twenty five thousand dollars out there. It's, yes, we're willing to spend that if we get an appropriate proposal that the board agrees with.
So, so Mary, are you saying that your vote is, is it appropriation or or not?
It's, it's not an appropriation. It's a, well, a sense of, of the board to say, yes, we're willing to spend this money. If we see an appropriate proposal, our station from.
All right, my apologies for.
And what, what it is, Bob?
Well, my apologies for misinterpreting exactly, uh, what you were saying. Pete, does that work for you all?
It does.
Okay.
And and we, we will definitely, we're not, we're not making any commitments for the board as far as this. We're going to make sure that you guys are informed along the way.
I also have a feeling that proposals can be somewhat tiered, um, you know. If if there was a a feel for what twenty five thousand dollars can get you, they may even say. That fifty thousand dollars would get you this or something. I, you know, just based on our preliminary, uh, talks to kind of gather. Just a little bit more insight on how this industry works, um. I feel like we could get, yeah, and thank you, Carl. I appreciate all your insight on that, too.
No, usually the the proposals, I think, um, how they go is that. Uh, people will make proposals. There's no fee for that. The proposals will come in, the board or Pete and the group will evaluate the proposals. If they see something they like, they will bring a recommendation to the board and that the dollars would be to to execute whatever is being proposed that we agreed upon. And sometimes on those proposals, you can ask and how you, how we put that that bid out there, we can say that. If there's additional services and the cost, then you can include that, but but our proposal could be. For to see what kind of creative, um, strategies or proposals people can bring at a budget not to exceed, you know, twenty five thousand dollars. And so then a company or companies would then propose, this is what we would do in a, in a price range. So they might bring it. So a lot of companies would try to bring in a little bit less of that, because they were ones trying to be competitive to win the bid. Especially with the idea that there could be additional work after that. So so it'll just be proposals that they'll bring and they'll be up to us to say, yes, yea or nay in terms of if we would want to allocate that money or not. Or or go farther.
I would think the board is not going to look over all those proposals that we're going to have a recommendation from the staff of what they would like. I mean, I, I don't, it's our job to go through proposals.
Well, I I somewhat agree with that, but I would like to, depending on how many we get, and I suspect there'll be quite a few. At least let the staff, uh, you know, pick out the, the first, the top three or whatever. I I've had to see the proposals myself in order to just get a feel of what we may be looking at in the future.
So I guess what, uh, trying to move this along, what we have is a motion. To allow staff to solicit services. For an education campaign not to exceed twenty five thousand dollars. Bring it back to the board for final approval before we authorize expenditure of that said twenty five thousand dollars.
Perfect.
Yeah.
I, I, but that's what we're talking about.
Uh, do you agree with that, Susan, since you seconded it?
Yes, yes, I do. I, it's, should be proposed as competitive and what comes in is based on how we would evaluate.
There any additional discussion? Question?
Just, I would just say that I could, I could vote for that if there was a chance of us reviewing the top three proposals, uh, as opposed to just going with, with one.
I I wouldn't see a problem with this. Obviously, staff will come back with their recommendation of one, which one they think, they think is best. After their evaluation, but I wouldn't think there'd be any problem at all with us reviewing all three of, or three or, you know, however many.
Right.
Top three, whatever. Does that cause you all, Pete, you or Karen, any heartache?
I think the motion would have to be changed then, i- if we're going to do it that way, Bob, right?
No, I, I mean, my motion was that the staff would come back with their recommendations. If they have three recommendations, then that's. You know, that would, that would satisfy yours and and.
Yeah, I I think that could be open ended, because it could be that the staff thinks there's only two that are responsive. Or they could possibly come back and say, hey, we've got five. We want you all to look at.
Right, and we may only get two proposals. I mean, you don't know if you tie it to a number.
We're not, I I I would say the motion doesn't limit it to three, uh, either way, up or down. We, we just, we want to look at the staffs. The board reserves the right before we approve the expenditure of the money. We reserve the right to look at what they narrow it down to as the best prospect.
I'm okay with that.
Uh, now it's up to Amy to make sure that gets reflected at such in the minute. We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any additional discussion? Okay, we'll call for a vote. Although in favor, uh, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, uh, that passes. Uh, why don't you go ahead at this time as part of old business and give us the update on the Ralph Avenue?
Sure. Uh, first, I'd like to say thank you especially for the input, uh, Carl. Um, you've given us some really good information, so, uh, I do appreciate the board, uh, for making that vote, but also the, uh, the information. So the other item I wanted to talk to you guys about is kind of late developing, uh, in its, in regards to the Ralph Avenue site. Uh. As, uh, Bruce Blue indicated earlier, uh, copper prices have went through the roof. Uh, so, uh, there's a big market out there for obtaining copper. A lot of that is illegal. And what we have happening at Ralph Avenue site is people breaking, uh, cutting through the outer fence. And digging into the old cells to pull out metal, copper. And when they find it, they're burning the coating off of that copper and setting the site on fire. Uh, there's been multiple fires in the past, uh, little bit. Uh, there was one, uh, the night before and they felt like that it was a surface fire and it was out.
There was one the night before and they felt like that it was a surface fire and it was out. Unfortunately, later today, it was realized that the fire may be getting down into the field. So the site has been shut. It's closed at the moment. The, the estate has ordered them to work 24/7 until the, the situation is resolved. That right now is that they, they're bringing in cover in an attempt to smother it. They are going to go ahead and cover the working face where the, their debris is, is open right now. So they've already done that. They brought in a lot of dirt. The, there is very little smoke, but there is odor. There's been complaints in the community about that odor. So it may be something that you're going to hear in, in the news. We're hoping that, that the efforts to smother the fire is going to be successful. You know, I think that when you're talking about C and D and the compaction levels that are at the site, I think that there's probably some voids in there. I think it's going to be pretty difficult to get this thing put out just from my fire department experience. So hopefully this works. If not, the next step is excavation. That comes with some issues about water supply whenever you're in a place where there's landfill or a, a site like this, it's very difficult to get enough water up there. If you start to excavate it, it starts to get more air that, you know, if you're not ready for that, you know, it can get away from you a little bit. So just wanted to bring you guys up to date on that site. If you remember, it is through an agreed order with the state. We do not have a license or permit through Metro or the waste district for the site. So you may be hearing about it. We will keep everybody up to date as far as the, the progress on extinguishing the fire. So it's our hope that it's done quickly. It is our anticipation that it's, that it's done quickly and that the operators are on it 24/7 until it is successful. So with that, I am open to any questions or concerns that you guys may have.
The, the state shut them down, right?
Yes, sir.
And with this being an issue of people breaking into the site, do you anticipate that before the state would allow them to resume operations, there, there will have to be some kind of better security? Or, or have they, has the state talked much about that?
Yes, they have. And the, the site has added cameras. They, they've had reports to LMPD, I think 28 times over the past couple of months, trying to stop the people. But they're just, they're just brazen. They don't care. So they are adding onsite officers that will be on the, the the facility over near where they're making their penetration. The problem is the site is relatively large and they're getting into old spots that are sometimes fairly far apart. And, you know, you're in the middle of the night. It's dark. They may be able to hide out and still do their work. I don't know, even with a security guard there. But, but yes, they are enhancing security. They, they are adding remote devices to, to do more monitoring. So there is a lot of attempts to stop it. They, they've spent $30,000 on new fencing and they added barbed wire and, and those types of things. But, you know, unfortunately, these things are, these people are fairly motivated to get in there and get that copper. A lot of it has to do with that price going up. So I think the last time that copper prices was this high, there was a lot of copper theft. And I think Bruce Blue could probably speak to the fact that when the prices on copper go up, it, it's an issue.
It, it is an issue. Aluminum is high, copper is high, stainless steel is high. I can tell you in cans, but hey, when cans go down low, they aren't there. If cans get, we're paying 25 cents a pound, nobody, nobody picks up cans because they say it's not worth it. The big problem today, and I don't know if you all know about it, is catalytic converters. I've talked to the reporter from the Courier that wrote the article. I've talked to the guy from Dixie or whatever it is, and I've sent an editorial to the Courier Journal, but through Izri. And I'm going to try to meet with the Metro Council, you know, I'm going to put in and talk to them about it to see if we, we've got some plans how to. But there is a way to mark copper. So you all know for copper, the copper before it was insulated with, with the insulation and it was too expensive to do it. So you couldn't, you couldn't steal copper. If you burned the wire off, the, the name was still on it. So you, you, but it never worked out. But I have to be real careful. You're putting out recyclables today in those bins in the wrong areas. There won't be anything in the bins. Questions if possible.
Thanks, Bruce.
Any questions of Pete or Bruce? All right, Pete, thanks for the report. Thank you, Bruce. Next, next item, advisory committee report. There's no new business, advisory committee report.
I would point out that we are at 7:07, which is over our meeting time. If Bruce and Karen want to do a, a committee report, I think they, they still could. I'm not sure that we have any actions that require that the board hear it at this particular time and nor for the staff report for the recycle cart updates. I, I think that if the, you know, if we want to continue, that's fine. I don't know that we have anything hugely substantive to bring to the board at this point.
Since this is a special meeting, I guess we are obligated to shut off at the seven o'clock time since that was previously announced. Or not.
I don't know, but it tends to make sense to me, Bob.
Yeah, I, we don't have, I know as Peter left the meeting, so we don't have. But I think since this is a special meeting and we announced it as seven o'clock, I think we, I think we're under an obligation to shut it off at seven. Without being able, yes.
Cats is on the agenda and we have to start it at a certain time. Don't have to shut it off at a certain time. Because everybody who wanted to be at the meeting is, is here and, you know, they, they, they can't. So.
If, if I understood you, again, you were breaking up a little bit. If I understood you right, you're saying that as, as long as we announce the meeting, it's starting at a certain time, we're not under an obligation to shut it off at the time we announce it.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. What's, what's the board's pleasure? I mean, we have kept, we announced it as seven o'clock. We have kept you here till seven. If we go beyond, is anybody on the board object to that?
Maybe another 15 minutes, but I'd rather not go to 7:30 if we.
Right. Okay. Well, can I ask Pete and Karen and Bruce to be as brief as you possibly can if, if you want to make a report?
I will start, Chairman. The advisory committee has met and our subcommittees have met. And we have revisited the impact and effort matrix. And we've revisited to view today's world versus what it was back in March of 2021 to ensure we still had the right topics of focus. Mr. Blue has joined the advisory committee and he is serving on the ICI self hall subcommittee. The residential and C and D subcommittee is focusing, well, we've got an approved focus on expanded marketing campaign for recycling and compost. And we've got one in progress for advanced enforcement of yard waste. And also we're roping in one for waste reduction and reuse education on the residential sector. And Adam Storey is checking out the state requirements on the amount of shingles allowed in composition asphalt to see what we can do along those lines. On the ICI self hall, obviously we're looking at the self hall standards, the separation requirements for self hall facilities and the enhanced enforcement of the yard waste disposal ban on industrial, commercial institutional waste. So that in a nutshell is what I have to report on from the advisory committee perspective.
Any questions of Bruce? Thank you, Bruce. Any questions of Bruce? Comments? All right. Thank you very much, Bruce. Karen, did you have anything to add to that? Okay.
I think she's frozen.
All right.
Yes, sir. The, just wanted to let you guys know that the, the agreements for the recycle carts has been finalized. Both of them signed. We have one more hurdle, which is Metro Council approval. It's had its first reading and it's been put to the consent calendar of the Metro Council, which should be voted on tomorrow without discussion. So at this point, we are starting to work in earnest on the plans for the rollout of, of this. Working with the partnership at Certic, they've been a huge help in trying to develop the materials. And, you know, we'll be, we'll be keeping you guys up to date in the progress of that. But right now, everything is on schedule and moving, moving, moving well.
Questions?
Sorry.
Questions of Pete? Okay.
The clean collaborative update, I will tell you that most of the crews have been hired. They actually started some cleanings today and yesterday, I believe. We have, it's, it's coming together so fast. You know, we're, we're trying to get things put together. I'm not sure what area they're working, but, you know, we'll kind of keep you guys up to date as that progresses. And hopefully even get the, the tracking dashboard up to where people can see what's going on in almost real time. And that's as quick of a staff report as I can do.
Questions or comments from the board? We have covered everything on the agenda for tonight. I appreciate everybody coming and participating. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion to adjourn. Hearing no objections, we will adjourn the February 24th special board meeting. Thank you all. Thank you all very much.
7:14. Thank you, guys. Y'all have a good night.
Bruce, are you still there?